The City of Plymouth City Council meeting for Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now called to order. In-person participation by the public is permitted, and remote electronic public participation is also available via Zoom. Members of the public participating electronically via this via the above Zoom link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed on the agenda, on your phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand, use star six to mute and unmute your phone. This meeting will be is being recorded, and we ask you now to silence all cell phones or similar devices. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter. Councilmember Kleinfeldter is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Thank you.
And could we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic and to the nation. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America. We are in this court with the Constitution of America.
The City of Plymouth City Council meeting for Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three is now called to order. In-person participation by the public is permitted, and remote electronic public participation is also available via Zoom. Members of the public participating electronically via this via the above Zoom link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed on the agenda, on your phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand, use star six to mute and unmute your phone. This meeting will be is being recorded, and we ask you now to silence all cell phones or similar devices. Can we please have roll call?
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter. Councilmember Kleinfeldter is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
Thank you.
And could we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic and to the nation. We are in this court with the Constitution of America.
Number two, approval of the city council regular meeting agenda for April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter is absent. Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number three, public comment. Under provisions of the California Code, the city council citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker's submittable form to the city manager or following the COVID-nineteen advisory instructions noted on this agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state their name and community of residence, but doing so is not required. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially materially discussing or taking any action on any item not on the agenda unless it could be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So I'll open it to public comment. Is there anybody here in City Hall who would like to speak during public comment? No? Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, closing public comment. Consent calendar items. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless before the city council votes on the motion to adopt, members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. Five point one is correspondence, which there is none. Okay. And five point two, approval of the special meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Five point three, approved letter of engagement with the PUN group for thirty-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year audit. Excuse me, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one slash two thousand and twenty-two audit. Five point four, approved resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash nineteen authorizing continued participation in and approving the amended and restated joint powers agreement of the Fire Risk Management Services Joint Powers Authority. Five point five, accept the warrant register for March two thousand and twenty-three. Five point six, resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty, making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings virtually. Is there any public comment regarding the consent calendar items? Here in City Hall, I don't see anybody. On Zoom, is there anybody?
Not at this time.
Okay, I'll close this to public comment.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfeldter is absent. Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number seven, regular agenda items. Item seven point one is to award a contract and authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with REY Engineering to commence environmental work on the Arroyo Ditch for an amount not to exceed eight hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Could we please have a staff report?
I'll just say a couple of things before I turn it over to the city engineer. The council had asked for a total amount expended from the grant funding. And to date, there has been a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-one cents spent out of both combined the OES and the FEMA grant monies.
Sand fire.
Sand fire and the storm total. And with that, I'm going to let Matt.
Can I ask a question about that? There there was some with one of those grants, and I'm sorry, I don't remember which one, but where we had to borrow the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from uh, Amador County. That has also been spent also on this project?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So total with two fifty plus the number you just mentioned, one hundred and what?
Yes.
So so we spent three hundred and some odd thousand dollars to date. Do we know what that was spent on? Did you mean me? I've seen nothing.
Yeah, REY did a lot of work, and I wish I had him here to to discuss this, but um, I don't have that answer, Doug. Sorry. There there was a lot of work done.
Over the course, I mean, I I believe that was the two fifty was was approved prior to myself and the mayor getting on to the council, so we.
And Councilmember McLaughlin.
Actually, you and I, two fifty was approved prior to us in in the last, over two years ago. So we don't know exactly how what was approved for or what was spent on, and here we are, three hundred thousand. Anyway, that money's that money's gone.
Yeah, I think that was back in Jeff Gardner's days when that when they got the loan from the county. Yeah, so I wasn't around either.
So so just so it's clear for me, the amount that we are required to match, we have matched it, and we have spent it.
Was this one considered match? Would they have been considered our match?
So there was um, what the the state one is a twenty-five percent match. The federal one is an, I think, eight and six point two five percent match, yeah. So I don't, this, we'll have to work with Margaret, but I don't know if some of that money, a lot of times female, they'll just cut you the check. And I don't know if that was done. I've had agencies where they're still waiting for money, but a lot of times they'll just send you a check. It's it's really weird how the system works with the disaster funding, so it could have been the case where city already got the money. I don't know. I'll have to do some more digging on that.
I got, I don't know, maybe questions and statements, because I I could be wrong on this. I mean, six years was a long time ago. Like you said, it looks like it was back in Jeff's day, but I think it was even before me that that money, I think that was because of the sand fire when that initially, yeah, yeah. I I could hear, we might have someone here in the public that might know a little bit more on that, too.
Because I'm just wondering, because it's, I think it's important to know, do we still need to come up with that six percent or twenty-five percent, or have we already fulfilled that obligation? That's one of the reasons why I'm asking. Can we, without using up anybody's three minutes, can we, is everybody okay if we ask a former councilperson if they remember?
Yeah.
And Frank, would that be? Okay.
It's been a long time since we did all that, and I have slept since then, and I don't do very good. Remember remembering, I am forward because I've been trying to stay on top of this one, especially when Jeff Gardner, which I monthly ask him, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on? And I I just can't, it it it's just beyond me that we spent a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, REI spent a hundred and twenty-seven, nine thousand dollars plus two hundred and fifty. Is that my understanding? The total being three, three hundred and seventy-nine, seventy-nine thousand?
That hundred and twenty-nine was not all to REY. That is some to Weber-Gio, and there was some to another company. It wasn't all to REY.
Well, normally, on a on a hardware project like this, your engineering and environmental work is about twenty percent, my understanding. And we're exceeding that already, and I don't know what we what we've received. Is the environmental work done, complete? No. Uh, so I I think, you know, you need to audit to see what what happened.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, the the gentleman was representing this in REI was probably prior to Public Works Director by Amador County.
Well, my understanding is FEMA requested additional environmental work done.
Right. And that's what the RP was put out for.
Okay, thank you, John, and we look forward to your comments during public comment, but thank you for trying to fill in
Yeah.
some historical information.
More comments than you give.
Okay.
Good chance.
Microphone? Thank you.
So my recommendation would be, I mean, we had a lot of good discussion last last meeting about this. I I think the best approach would be kind of, as Jim Fisher mentioned, is we initiate some kind of a smaller scope to the to REY to kind of dig into the water right and get some more facts before we authorize this whole thing. I think that would be the best best fit. Present some more information before we really go too far. And then I think I'll work with Margaret, and we'll kind of dive into figure out some more on this funding thing and what, and I'll get the facts, like what was actually done, because I I know REY did a lot of work, and just don't have that data right now.
Yeah.
Also, we'd like to know, these these two grants, how are they being paid? Is it, will it dribble in the nine hundred thousand and the million dollar grants? Or they pay us as we go forward, or like to know how that happens? Are we having to to front that money first?
Yeah, so that's that's what I'm not sure either, because like you said, some agencies.
Or how we collect that money.
Some agencies put in their request, and they just cut them a check. They take out, you know, the share that you're supposed to match, and then it cuts you the different. Another agency, you have to show the work was done, so it's really strange how.
It wasn't very clear in the package how REI gets paid.
So they would probably submit their bill to the city, and the city would pay them and get reimbursed if if the check wasn't. The money didn't come from FEMA right out the gate. So we'll have to look at that. I don't. I was involved in the finances, so. Fortunately, Michael's not here.
I have one, I have one more question. If we go forward with the the eight seventeen with REY at the end of that two-year period, if we decide we want to throw the brakes on, not go any further, are we obligated to go continue, or can we say at that point, after we spent the eight fifteen seventeen with them, are we okay to to stop right there? We don't, we're we're not happy with the results. We're not happy with the fact that we
or how this looks.
How how's all going to go forward after that?
Yeah.
Because because there's no mention of how much that construction job is going to cost, because they don't know, obviously. Not even a not even a projected number of what that that this this whole project is going to cost after the engineering is completed.
So what I've seen is that that doesn't go well. They want the money back if you don't proceed, so we'll have to clarify, get that clarification, too. So that could be very, yeah. Yeah, there's probably a couple of issues there. One is, what are the repercussions for the grant? And that could be, like Matt said, you may have to to pay 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 them back. You actually would have to.
Makes your point on deciding to do it.
Yeah, but it's contractually, we have, you can terminate for convenience at any time with these consultant contracts. So that wouldn't be an issue, but yeah, the grant would be an impediment.
But my personal concern would be how much is that construction job going to cost after they do all this engineering? And we're faced with a five million dollar job? And we and we can't get it?
And my concern is, what is what what could be? What are the possible challenges in court? And what do we need to do to be in a really good position to prevail? And so therefore, and I and I think one of the things that Jim mentioned is the first thing that he would, one of the first things that he would do is really look at at the 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 legality of the water rights. And then I think my next question would be, okay, once once we've been given counsel on that, then we look at what what exactly do we have to do? And I, so I wondered, this eight hundred and seventeen some odd thousand dollars proposal, could we break it down more into steps after we have more of that information about the the legal analysis? So those are my thoughts. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I I fully, you know, just based off our conversation two weeks ago, and then just echoing the comments tonight, that 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 legal deep dive, right? Clearly articulating our our our, you know, getting the strong opinion on the water right, but also the one step further is is that water right contingent upon this ditch functioning? Or is there another way for us to, you know, a- a- access and bring the water to town without the ditch, right, which may be a more cost-effective means? I I don't know. I don't know what the answer is on that. And then from that, if an alternate means is a realistic possibility of being able to bring water into town, can the grant funding be used to put that project into place, right? Because we're, our, and what in in my nexus in tying those together is that the that our ditch was destroyed by two disaster, you know, declared disasters, right? And we have two options. We can repair it, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-year-old ditch and restore it. But that may be more cost prohibitive than putting different modern technology and accessing water further down the river. And or maybe the ditch is the most economic approach, right? But what are our options, and can we use those grant funds for those other options to restore that water delivery back to the city as a secondary means as needed? That make sense?
It does, and I'll just say that our water right, though, is the ditch. Right? So that's going to be, it's going to be hard to it's hard for me just to, just from a legal perspective, to think of alternative ways that we could get a newer and better source of water, because the ditch is, it's a pretty powerful water right that we have now. But I do think a deeper dive as far as, okay, what is the extent of our water right? What is, what, you know, what is that, what do we understand that to be from a legal perspective? But then really, how is that applied to what actually needs to be done at the ditch? I think that's the question that's never been looked at. Like, the first question is obviously, what are the what's the legal state of our water right? Second one is, how does that relate to and apply to the damaged areas of the ditch? In other words, does all of the ditches need to be repaired for us to be able to, you know, take all the acre feet and divert all the water that we want to? Or are some areas, they're just a little bang for your buck as far as putting that water to beneficial use and preserving that water right? And I don't know that.
What I what I have heard is that the ditch was not operating very well prior to this damage, the fire and the flood. Eighty, we had an eighty-five percent leakage of that ditch prior to the damage. Not very effective.
Well, yeah, because it's it's unlined for the most part, yeah.
Unlined.
Yeah. So that being said, from what I've always heard and then assumed was that the ditch has been so substantially, notwithstanding the fact that there you always had, you always had loss through groundwater seepage and evaporation and all that kind of stuff. Notwithstanding that fact, the it was my understanding that the damage that was done between those two events substantially impaired our ability to put that water to various beneficial uses. And so it's been my assumption the whole time, if we want to continue to preserve that water right, we need to show uh, we need to show diligence in repairing the ditch. And the other thing is just from a high-level perspective, the our water right is still, we still have a lot of good, what's the word? It's still very defensible because of the fact that circumstances outside of our control prevented us from using the same amount of water over the past ten years or so. But if we don't go ahead and then do the thing that we said we were going to do, it undermines our position, frankly, because we allowed a maybe a less less amount of water diversion, less amount of water usage over a certain period of time due to these events. And then if we if we don't repair it, then it calls into question, did those events actually cause your 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 water right usage to go down? Because it is something that for pre nineteen fourteen rights, it is a use it or lose it type of situation. So we just have to be mindful of that. So there, yeah, all that to say is there's a lot of important questions to ask.
It appears to me that we spent eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to to engineer the portion that's been damaged in these two events, which equates to about one mile out of seventeen. There's sixteen miles of ditch that that that'll go unrepaired. We will will stay or remain the same prior to this the event. Again, not not a very effective ditch. We spent all this money, and and we don't know what it's going to, even the cost to repair this one mile of ditch, line it, fix it, repair it, the flume, et cetera. We don't know what that what that number is going to be. And at at the end of the day, when they when they when they go out to bid for this 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 project, what if it's way over above what the money we have that we've been allocated? What do we do then?
Um, I take away a couple of things that I heard, and the one thing that rang was when you said defensible last or last meeting, and you said it again this meeting, which makes me feel somewhat in a better spot about everything. We, I said it last meeting, we don't even have a starting point on this, and we need to have a starting point. I agree with Matt. We kind of need to know what's going on as far as the cost of everything. I think that's the most important thing. The other thing I I I'm going to take into consideration, and that's just the pits of me living here my whole life, is I know that this ditch is as important as some people's last names to them in this community. And but I I don't want to take away from any of our other council members here. I understand costs and all that also, and we just don't know either side of the spectrum. That's just kind of where I'm sitting at a point.
Any other comments? Um, okay. Um, I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anybody here at City Hall who would like to comment on this issue, on this item? Microphone, please?
We are in somewhat a crisis. After the last meeting, Doug had had mentioned to me that, you know, we needed to find out more information. The following day after that meeting, I went down to South San Joaquin Irrigation District, spent several hours with their guru on water rights and got the opinion that the state has no control over our pre nineteen fourteen right. And they said that they've tried to take control over them down there, and they tell them just to stop it. And they've been doing that, and they finally said that they finally realized that they do not have the control, so they're not even watching them anymore. They have never filed a a beneficial use statement. They refuse to do it. And never had a problem with their pre nineteen fourteen rights. So he said, whatever you do, don't sell. So he said, whatever you do, don't sell water rights gold. And and secondly, don't let the state try to control what you're doing with something that you own before they existed. Uh, so that's a pretty strong statement. I have the the gentleman's card right here. I think. Um, the the main thing that we need to do, West Water did a study at nine thousand dollars. Uh, that basically said that they thought the water right was intact and stuff. But we we need to know. What our authority is on on the pre nineteen fourteen rights. And um. And and if if it's if it's fully intact, we can do what we want with that. It it changes the picture an awful lot. The the other thing that I found out from uh, my visit down there. Was one of the things we're interested in, if if we do sell water down the river, is there a market for it? And what is that market? And they told me that they're selling, they did have, uh, they've sold water in the past to Westland Irrigation District. That gets up into uh, four or five hundred dollars an acre foot of water. Uh, however, that's, you gotta pay for the pumping and all that to get down to get it through the system. Um, they sell their water locally for two hundred dollars an acre foot, the surplus water. And they said the reason what establishes that is the cost of pumping the groundwater. And they're, they, in most cases, they're selling the water for cheaper than the farmers can pump it out of the ground. So that establishes uh, uh, widens the market quite a bit. For us here in in trying to develop a market downstream. I then went to uh, um, the Galt the following day and and talked to who. Farmer, John Farmer, who used to be the mayor and is still in the council. And he was really intrigued by the fact that we need help. And he said that they'll do everything they can to help us. As far as they know right now, their needs have been met, but they're they're also mostly all on wells. Their oil water is in, so they're drafting on the water table there. So there's a possibility that they might want, if the market is. It's it's reasonable enough that they might be interested themselves in the water. Uh, and they were supposed to get back to me a week and they have, I was in touch with them yesterday and have not. Uh, the the mayor himself is much, is somewhat of a guru on water. For water rights and he sits on regional boards for water, so we're looking for to hear from him. And Mike and I are gonna go down and sit on their on their front door and see. What kind of information we can get from as far as the availability of of marketing the water. But we got um. We need to get a real good opinion on our first. Uh, what right the state has over the pre nineteen forty water rights? And do we have the ability to sell water down the down the river without their uh, permission? The second thing is, do they have a right to require us to put that to beneficial use and report on it? Uh, South San Joaquin says no. If they do that substantial changes, whether we need to do the repair work or not. One of the problems with doing the repair work, I was explaining to somebody today. It's the 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 value of this water, this is the only surface water left around our county. And the value of it is the future of of growth, of a healthy growth of this county. And um. The so, when, wh- what we need to do is establish a market for this, sell the water. Be able to develop a plan in order to make a delivery system. That delivery system. Like Doug keeps complaining about is, has got the eighty percent loss. The the actual loss per mile in in these earth and ditches usually runs six and a half to seven percent. We're up about eight percent. So and in the past, the state has said, well, we'll give you credit for that water loss, even though, because it's a reasonable loss. But anyway. Uh, we need to see, you know, whether we have any requirement to operate that ditch or should can we just sell water down the river?
Okay.
And I think they need to do an audit and uh. Um, I I just, I can't believe that we sent this kind of money and 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 not. Uh, be the point when we were going out to bid. And with the escalating prices in in this. There was studies done at that time of the cost of the project and grants we asked for. Were substantially higher than what we actually got because the the feds came in and aided their studies and thought that we were. Too high on our prices. So um, it is, it's something you need to take a look at. Uh, I'm sure the South San Joaquin Water Rights uh, attorneys would talk to Mike, their friend. Uh, and there are other attorneys. The problem is trying to find one that doesn't have a conflict interest. Uh, these days with water rights attorneys. Uh, I used to know uh, the two best water rights attorneys in the state and they were both at my dad's funeral. A few years ago, so involved with water.
Thank you, John.
Anything we can do, uh, Jim has had some contacts with water lawyers too and so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here at in City Hall who would like to make public comment on this? Anybody on Zoom?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay, so I'll close this to public comment and um, just ask for final comments, questions, anything from? Council, Councilmember McLaughlin?
I I think just one point of clarification that. I mean, I'm in full agreement of deferring you. Just a point of clarification is that this amount for this contract was a result of an RFP process. So it was competitively bid, just for clarification for the record. But with that, I support the the direction that um, we've discussed in terms of, you know, comprehensive legal analysis audit on. Just getting a full, from grass of where we currently are, so we can determine where we're gonna go from here.
Keith?
I agree with Mike. I, I think we probably have a consensus after that, but yeah, I agree with Mike on that.
I do as well. I think we have way too many questions that are unanswered to make any decisions this evening, so.
So do you guys want to set like a budget to have REY dive into some of this? Water right stuff?
I I I I think what I'm, what I'm thinking is rather than REY. Have a legal firm do it, whether it's somebody who specializes in water. Speci- specific, specifically specializes in in water rights in this sort of, which. A simple Google search told me that B B B B and K does that.
Yeah, we have some of the best, I mean, I'm not just saying that some of the firm, we have some of the best water rights lawyers in the state. Um, and I, again, I don't care if you guys go with whoever you want, it doesn't matter to me. But based on our rates, I would go with our firm. Because we just have, you're not gonna get that level of specialists at the rates that we would, you know, in our contract, so. It, you know, do what you want, but if you want to pay more, you know, it doesn't matter. I I just think. We have the ability already just to get there on grinding without going to a new contract or whatever.
So do we have to bring that back because it's not on the agenda?
No, I mean, it's just part of staff needs to look at this. Staff needs to look at water rights, staff needs to look at what the grant money's been spent for. And frankly, all your staff is right here. Um, so I don't think, you know, you don't need to take any subsequent action other than just. Staff needs to do more digging and bring back whatever they think is appropriate, but the item is presented tonight is not ready. That's what I'm hearing.
And I I also want to acknowledge that I'm really grateful that we're able to have. The discussion that we had at the last meeting and again, and we might have more discussions. That I know for me personally, this is certainly not my area of expertise, a little difficult for me to wrap my head around. Um, so I appreciate that we truly are um. Being afforded a robust discussion on this and um, I know it's a lot of work for you guys, but. Thank you for your 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 patience with us. This this is a big deal. Yeah. I I don't think any of us, I don't think anybody in this room, we don't want to be the ones who make the wrong decision. So did you feel like you have? A place to begin, okay? Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um. Okay, item eight, council staff communications. Um, we'll begin with a city manager's report?
So I'm working on the ACR report for the pool, hopefully at the next agenda. Um, it could be two meetings, but I'm working on that. I'm working on the corporation lease for next meeting. Um, hopefully I will have a update on the budget at the next meeting. Um, leading into hopefully a budget workshop. Um, I met with Senator Alvarado Gill with the mayor last Friday. That went really well. And I have been working on preliminary budget numbers for next year. Trying to make it a more. Detailed budget with more information on it, like you asked, it's um. A lot of process. It's probably won't be exactly where I want it to be this year, but it will have a lot more detail. That's my report.
Thank you. Um, council member reports and requests for future agenda items. We'll combine that all into one. Councilmember McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just a a couple of. Reports. Um, first I wanted to like to just do a shout out and bring recognition to our our building inspector. Building official John Peabody. Um, he's one of the first people from the city that I met when we moved into town and. Fortunately, unfortunately, we've had a total of four building permits on our home and of course that we've been here and and worked through it. And he's just been um, just a consummate professional and and absolute advocate for the residents and homeowners as we work through some of these journeys. And so um, just wanted to make sure, recognize him for that work. Um, one item that I saw a Facebook post and a couple of our, two of our council members had commented before I saw it. So I wasn't able to, but something that really strikes home to me where was a concern raised about the ambulance response times. Uh, I've spent the majority of my career advocating and working at the state level. From lawsuits to local and EMS rights to everything else. And so this is something that's near and dear to my heart and I intend to. Um, I've I've had brief discussions um, with Ms. Roberts and will be working with her um, jointly. As as we dive into this and extrapolate data to really understand what is the level of service we're receiving here in our community. Um, another item, um, just putting out. Um, that there was a a League of Cities listserv post um, by a council member in the city of Galt. Somebody who I've known for quite some time, putting out a request, looking for. Examples of agreements as they're looking to do a public private partnership between the city of Galt and their Chamber of Commerce. Um, and for me, it's something that resonated close to, not necessarily exactly the same, but close to what we're looking to try to do. With the Ventnor's Heritage District as they continue to move forward. And so I've asked to share any information. Um, that he may receive as part of his information request and see if any of it is applicable to us as we continue to navigate our path. And for me, I have um, two agenda items that I'd like to.
Excuse me, uh, sorry to interrupt you, but I I just gotta say something. I'm working on that agreement right now for the city of Galt.
Oh, okay.
So um, we maybe we should talk.
We'll talk.
Yeah.
It's it's a small world, but yeah, I think uh, it's a, you know, I think it's just an opportunity to to learn from what other people have done to help us potentially, you know, learn. Learn from that. So great, excellent. And I don't even know if it's possible, just in the information gathering. Um, I have um, two, two agenda item requests. I guess backing up and and starting with a why, um, in our council meeting two weeks ago, we voted down. One fee study and then deferred the other based on the lack of an RFP process. As I've continued to dig in and look that um, that us as a body, as a city council, we've not adopted a policy that talks about RFPs. Or what thresholds exist, nor have we provided the city manager with any direction of when that threshold would kick in. It's more. It's been my experience so far that it's arbitrary and comes up after the fact instead of providing marching orders upfront. Um, what I do know from our fees, um, not only specifically our water fees, because we're currently subsidizing those fees in the city. So the longer the time goes by, the more behind we'll become and we're already behind. Um, as well as our fees for the city, that the longer we go without updating our fee schedule, the farther behind we become. With a collection of revenue and then there's a greater delta of closing that gap when those fee studies are addressed. And so um, you know. My, what I would like to propose is next meeting um, for the April twenty seven, twenty three, three meeting is bring back both items. The proposal in to enter an agreement for water and wastewater studies. And the proposal to enter into an agreement for a citywide fee study. Um, and then the second item, which I don't have a date on because I recognize it's um, the staff time is um. To bring forth a a comprehensive procurement policy that talks about quotes, formal and informal bidding. Expenditure amount and term thresholds, purchasing and approval authority limits, basically. Taking what we've talked about and danced around for a while and putting a nice bow on it, making it very clear and transparent of what our thresholds are for. For doing business so that we can set our staff up for success.
And just to clarify, did you want the purchasing policy dropped to that by next meeting?
No, sir. So the the first two, the bringing back the items that were up for consideration two weeks ago. That those to be brought to the next meeting, the third item for the procurement policy. Obviously, the sooner the better, but recognizing staff time limitations and swap with that timeframe in the city manager. Within the city manager's discretion.
Councilmember White?
I don't have any further agenda items or anything. Um, I do just want to mention something about um, the RFP. Thing that Mike was talking about, um. Remember when we are a small city and how difficult it is, um, I had two bids come across my desk today. Maybe that was my bad decisions that I would know, but that um, I I contacted both of these government agencies and said, I don't want nothing to do with them. Um, just because I knew it was gonna be, so that is one thing that we gotta consider when we take things out for bid. You might get companies now that don't want to deal with the work just because of the process of it. So I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Mike was saying there. My other is kind of a feel good story. I've mentioned over the years. On council about how I feel about the unhoused in our community and stuff and uh. Uh, as many people know, in this community, I started working with an individual, I don't know, about ten months ago, hired him at my office and uh. Um, and he kind of was uh. Did the proud, I don't want to say dad moment thing today, but um. He, he's, has a house now, um. Has two vehicles now, but why I bring it up today is is because he went and bought a truck motor nicer than a lot of people that I've seen. And uh, he had a big old smile on his face and it was just a, I don't know, when I go back to that compassion, caring. Um, he's never had that in his life and now he's part of an office, which. Maybe some people wouldn't say it's compassionate and caring because we're pretty tough on him. We treat him like a little brother, but um. It's just a shock how far he's come in life and within that nine months. So I just, yeah. I said, hey, I'm gonna share this tonight and he said, oh, yeah, please do. He likes his story getting told out, so. I was gonna do it for him. So that's all I have to say.
Um, Mayor, may I just interrupt again? I apologize, but I was just conferring with Margaret on um, Councilmember McLaughlin's request for the two are. For the two items to come back. The council did give pretty clear direction in the last meeting. To for her to do an RFP on those two items. So if we want to bring it back at the next meeting, I think it would. And then this goes to us not having a policy on future agenda items either, so I realize we're in a little bit of gray space, but. Yeah, I think it'd be better for Margaret if she knew there was a consensus of the council to revisit this and come back at the next meeting, because she did get. The exact opposite direction at the last meeting, just so in fairness to her. I think it'd be helpful, you know.
I have no problem with that.
Revisiting revisiting those two items.
Agreement with with Mike.
Okay.
I'm also in agreement with Mike and Keith.
Perfect. Thank you.
Doug? Make it efficient.
I would like to perhaps add something on an agenda item also.
You know, we're asking for consensus to bring those items back.
Yes.
Okay.
No. I would like to add, uh, in the future, maybe, obviously before summer, uh, to. Look into the possibility of making our pool, sea pool. Free for the kids. Maybe eleven or twelve and and under, rather than charge them. I'm not even sure what it is. I think it's three, three to five dollars a day. Um, there's a lot of kids that that I think that live here that probably would. Take, uh, would would use the pool more if they didn't have to spend a few dollars. I don't know, we look into how much we actually uh, make off these children and perhaps we can. Do, uh, find some way to to raise money, so these kids are can. Because I I know my my grandkids love to go there, uh, they can afford to pay the five dollars, whatever, they go there. They go there because they, they meet their friends there. They see their friends there and they have their own pool and they'd rather go there because they, they see that it's a great place for kids to meet and so forth. It, it's, as everybody knows, it's close to the, our school and so forth. I would really like to look into the possibility of making it free for kids. And uh, I guess in closing, I'd just like to say I've, I've been on council now for two years. This is the first time. I, I really feel like we're on the right track with our, our new city manager. Uh, my, my heart goes out to you. You've done terrific job in a short time you've been here and uh, really feel, feeling comfortable for the first time. And the council, you know, I think we're working better together than we, well, clearly we did first year or so and uh, just, I, I'm really happy how, how things are moving forward. We, we have some pretty serious issues we're dealing with and I, I'll just chime in the fact that I think, I think we're, as the mayor said, we're taking it very seriously. It's a lot of money and uh, anyway, we'll get through it. Yeah, thank you so much for your, all you've done.
Yes, thank you. Um, a, a couple of things and one thing I just wanted to mention, um, my email these last couple of weeks. We have that Barracuda quarantine thing and I've been having, I've been thinking that people, uh, well, anyway, I'm, I'm noticing that I'm getting emails going into that quarantine, which I don't check, but they're emails that I have received from people in the past and now all of a sudden they're being quarantined. For example, um, the executive director at Accra, we've been exchanging emails for two years. And now all of a sudden, this Barracuda thing has decided that it's not okay. So I just want to say if any of you think that you're not getting emails or something, check your quarantine and um. Your gift cards.
Remember when the, when my citywide got hacked and I asked everyone for gift cards.
Um, and then also, uh, as our, um, city manager Margaret said, we, we did meet with Senator Alvarado Gill last Friday. And um, and I want to note, you know, everybody remember Friday is Margaret's day off. But again, she, you know, uh, graciously agreed to meet on a Friday. Um, and I, I, I was really encouraged with the meeting. Um, I feel like um, Senator, Senator Alvarado Gill is very committed to the area. Um, I think we're pretty lucky that we have a senator who lives here in Amador County. And I think she's not only committed to the whole, uh, Amador County as a whole, but really seems to be invested and, and, and very interested in seeing Plymouth thrive. And I ju- I just felt that and I felt uh, such a genuine, caring, sincere vibe from her. Um, and so I think that I, I, I do, I think we have a great team here and Margaret, I'm so happy to have you as the city manager and now I think we have another ally. And so I think, I think this is just getting better. It's very exciting. Um, as, as far as the Facebook post and emergency services and response time, I am one of the council members who responded to that. Um, health and safety, I mean, shoot, we all really care about that. But um, as much as I care about it, again, I'm no expert in this area, but we do have an expert and, oh yeah, and so um, I just am glad that we can defer all of that to you. Um, so thank you for that. Um, that is all that I have. And I think if there's nothing else, we'll uh, close this part of meeting and, and close this part of the meeting and then go into our closed session. So did I bang it yet?